Is. Okay, well then, let's call this meeting order and start with the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Herewell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
There.
Here.
City Attorney Adams. City Attorney Adams? I see him.
You can see him too, but he's not answering. Does he have volume? Jet, can you hear anybody? Can you hear us, Jet?
No, I can't. I was having difficulty. Thank you.
All right, City Attorney Adams?
Here.
City Manager Croods?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
All right, let's start opening ceremonies with our invocation speaker, Pastor Carlos Camacho from Spark Seventh Day Adventist Church.
And I am bringing him over right now, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's good to see you all.
Good to see you.
Let's bow our heads so we can pray together. Heavenly Father, we come before your presence, Lord, because I think most of us are aware that we are living in difficult times. There is fear, there's confusion, there's a lot of questions happening. And Father, what a great thing to know that you are the God of the universe and that you lead and that you govern on top of all of us, Father. And Father, we submit each one of the lawmakers and those individuals who sit in places where decisions are made for the city, Father. We submit each one of them into your care so that your influence and your love will continue to lead in the decisions that they make in favor of each one of the citizens of this gray city. Father, we thank you because we can trust you and we entrust everything that we do so that your care and your spirit will lead everything that is done and everything that is said. Father, I also want to pray for each one of those individuals, our families and friends who are either present at this meeting or who are just the individuals that get to lead the decisions that are made. So that, Father, they would also be blessed in the process. Father, thank you. We pray and we ask all these in Jesus' name. Amen and amen.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Anderson, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, sir. Hey, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item four, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment? We'll start with your disclaimer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Spark City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to these or any other factors. For those watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and 12.1. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the City Council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand on your computer or tablet when prompted. You will be called on to speak one at a time by the name or the telephone number that you are calling from. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed or answered by the council if the topics have not been agendized. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. And at this time, if you would like to participate in public comment, please press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand from your Zoom app. And I did receive an emailed public comment, Mr. Mayor, that I will go ahead and read now. I am writing you to convey my anger and disgust over some recent actions taken by a certain public official that you work with, specifically a Charles Harris, who was recently imported here from California. Do we really need any more Californians moving here? To manage the RSCBA, I saw the news for story on this guy and the RDJ article. I can't believe he's getting paid over $420,000 a year. That's an insane amount of money. To make the matter even worse, Harris is really showing himself to be a poor leader and just another greedy California carpetbagger. In the last RSCBA meeting, which I watched on YouTube, Harris' demeanor, actions, and words really showed his lack of professionalism, character, morals, and ethics, his true colors. He became very offended at the mention of possibly not getting his $101,000 bonus, even though he's only been here a few months and has accomplished absolutely nothing. He also refused to set any goals for himself over the next few months, aside from meeting some people. What a joke. But it was very obvious during the meeting that he didn't support giving any back pay to RSCBA employees who have taken pay cuts because of the pandemic or any other employee bonuses. He was also greedy enough to include a clause in his contract that states he wouldn't be subject to any pay cuts. Smart. Compare this behavior to that of our own city manager Neil Croods. At the May 26, 2020 City Council meeting, Neil voluntarily gave up his 5% pay increase and 2.8% COLA. He even went as far as to voluntarily reduce his salary by 5%. And Neil was already receiving way less compensation than Harris. He is making $235,000 annually as opposed to Harris' $420,000. This was all done in response to the COVID pandemic, which has hit the City of Sparks really hard. Neil's actions show character and leadership by someone who cares about their community because it's their home. It's the exact opposite of this guy from Anaheim, who neither knows nor cares about us as his actions prove. I have friends who worked at The Nugget that lost their jobs. I was also really sad to see the city lay off over 35 employees over the past year in Parks and Rec. Our hotels and visitors pay room tax to the RSCBA. We need to take action to right the wrong that has been done by bringing this greedy pathetic excuse for a manager to our area. I urge you to use your influence to fire him and send him packing back to California. Fire a local person who has a good understanding of our area and industries and more importantly, has a vested interest in our communities because they live here. Please ensure that the text of this message is included at the next RSCBA board meeting and the next Spark City Council meeting as public commentary. Regards, James Wilson.
You know, normally I don't comment on public comment, but the amount of mistruths and misunderstanding in that whole public comment is outrageous. So I want the public to know you have great confidence in Mr. Harris. He's been here for two months and three weeks doing an outstanding job. And if you'd like to talk to me, Mr. Harris, please feel free to call me. I'll tell you more about him, but we just can't have outright lies and misstatements without some type of comment. So normally I don't comment on public comment, but that's a little beyond the pale for me. Sorry. Do you have any other public comment, Madam Clerk?
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Just give them a few minutes. Okay, see no more public comment. Let's move on to item number five, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda for the February 8, 2021 City Council meeting.
Okay, I'm looking for a second.
Mr. Mayor, I will second that motion.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item six, 6.1, consideration possible approval of the minutes of the Spark City Council meeting for January 25, 2021. Any additions, corrections, subtractions, Mr. Dare?
I move to approve.
We had a motion. Seconded by Councilman Abbott.
I'll second the motion to approve the minutes from the January 25th meeting.
I've got a second from Abbott before you. Thank you, though.
Sorry. Sorry.
Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item seven, announcements, presentations, recognition, and items of special interest. Boarding commission vacancy announcements for Parks and Rec, Mr. Croods.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of the council. For the record, Neil Croods, your city manager, here to announce a vacancy for a partial term that will run through June 30 of 2022 under Parks and Rec Commission. Applicants must be either a resident of the City of Sparks or hold a valid City of Sparks business license. Applications will be accepted through 5:00 PM this Thursday, February 11. And if you're interested in this, please go to our website and fill out a community service application. That is, that can be found at www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. It's all one word there. Once you're there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board, Commission, or Committee. Fill out the form and press submit. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Okay, let's move on to item 7.2. I'm going to spring this one on you, Councilman Dare, but would you mind reading that for us? After you unmute yourself. And I know I didn't tell you ahead of time.
It's all good. Be honored to you.
Thank you.
Whereas Faith Forum, a one-of-a-kind weekly multi-faith dialogue on religion published in the Reno Gazette Journal, will complete 10 years in print on February 11, 2021. And whereas this widely-read column is dedicated to constructive and respectful conversation, providing a successful partnership and fostering mutual understanding, trust, and loyalty in the community. And whereas religious statesmen Rajan Zed guides a panel of leaders of various religious and denominations to produce a faith forum on Sundays in the Reno Gazette Journal involving important religious issues affecting the region. And whereas religion is complex, powerful, and much more than any other particular tradition, while there are differences between religions, there are also interconnections and interdependencies between religions and different people have more in common than in conflict. And whereas many distinguished area faith leaders have contributed to the faith forum over the years in their efforts to help make Northern Nevada a more harmonious and loving society. And whereas the Reno Gazette Journal has hosted the faith forum for years, can you continue to do so will continue to benefit this community and therefore, our Mayor Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, joined with the City Council in expressing sincere appreciation for the important work of Rajan Zed and the contribution to the faith forum. And I'd just like to say that I always look forward to reading them. I think it is actually a great addition to our community and it's nice to have the opportunity to look through different people's eyes on a subject like that. So good job, everybody, and congratulations for 10 years.
10 years. That's pretty amazing to have an article going that long. So congratulations to the whole crowd. Appreciate it. All right, I don't think we have anyone here to accept that, do we?
I do not show anyone on.
Okay, perfect. All right, let's move on to consent items. Looking for a motion. Do anyone want to pull a consent item or otherwise I'm looking for a motion?
I'll move.
So first by Councilwoman Bybee, a second by Councilman Anderson.
To approve items 8.13, 8.3, consent items.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, you.
Will second that.
Okay, any further discussion? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously. General business, presentation discussion of possible approval of the mayor's two private citizen appointments to the Western Nevada Development District from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Candace Elder, Tracy Holland, and Art Spurber. And I've already chosen Art Spurber today or earlier. Today, I had the opportunity to speak with Tracy Holland and I'd like to ask the council to approve him as the other member of the Western Nevada Development District. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Vanderwaal.
I move to approve your two appointments to the Western Nevada Development District, Art Spurber and Tracy Holland.
Mr. Anderson?
Will second that.
Thank you, sir. All right, any further discussion? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. I think they're both going to do a good job. Art's been doing a good job for us and I think Tracy will be a nice addition with a different perspective. Consideration and possible, 9.2, consideration and possible action on a request for tentative map for 86 lot townhome subdivision on the side of 6.4 acres within a larger parcel of approximately 386.9 acres in size located at 555 Highland Ranch Parkway, Sparks, Nevada, in the MF2 zoning district. And I thought I saw Ms. Sienna Reed there.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lawson. And council members, for the record, Sienna Reed with the Planning Division presenting this item today. Before I dive in, I do want to confirm that you can see a slide that does say Five Bridges Village 1A on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. So this agenda item seeks your consideration of a tentative map request for Five Bridges Village 1A. The Village 1A project site, which totals 6.14 acres in size, is outlined on this slide in red. The Greater Five Bridges project site, which was recently expanded to a total of 421.58 acres, is outlined in blue. The Five Bridges development, which includes Village 1A, is subject to a development agreement that was initially approved in 2018 and most recently was amended in November of 2020. That approved agreement permits a minimum of 1,200 and a maximum of 1,800 residential units across the Greater Five Bridges project site. On this slide, you can see the conceptual land plan for Five Bridges that's helpful in walking through the background on some of the recent entitlements. So to date, there has been one tentative map approved for Five Bridges. Council approved that tentative map for a 460-lot single-family subdivision encompassing villages 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7 in May of 2020. Those villages are generally located in the central portion of the Five Bridges project site and are shown in orange, yellow, and then also in the blue areas on this particular slide. At that same meeting in May of last year, the City Council also upheld the Planning Commission's decision on appeal to approve a conditional use permit for development on slopes, hilltops, and ridges that approved conditional use permit, or CUP, extended beyond villages 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7 for which the tentative map was submitted to allow for disturbance within all or portions of villages 1A and 1B located in the southern portion of Five Bridges, as well as villages 8, 9, and 10 located in the north and northwest portion of Five Bridges. If approved by council today, the Village 1A tentative map that consists of 86 townhome lots would increase the number of lots with tentative approval in Five Bridges from 460 to a total of 546. As I just mentioned, the Village 1A tentative map consists of 86 townhome lots. These lots range in size from approximately 699 to 1,226 square feet and are surrounded by 5.62 acres of common area. The project site totals 6.14 acres and with the 86 lots proposed, the gross density of the project is 14 dwelling units per acre, which conveys with both the multifamily residential 14 comprehensive plan land use designation as well as the MF2 zoning district that are applicable to this site. This slide here shows the preliminary landscape plan for Five Bridges Village 1A. It gives you a good sense of the overall subdivision design. As proposed, the lots are arranged to create a series of five, six, and seven-unit townhome buildings and in total, there would be 14 townhome buildings on the site. Access to the subdivision will be from the first roundabout on Five Bridges Parkway and a sidewalk network consisting of internal and perimeter sidewalks connects to the Five Bridges Parkway sidewalk system. And in terms of the streets, we have internal streets that are proposed to be private. In regard to grade, the existing grade of the project site slopes downward from the northwest corner of the site by 70 feet to the southeast corner of the site. Fill is proposed to be used to create a building pad that would sit at a similar elevation to the Five Bridges Parkway roundabout, providing access to the lots. The finished grade for the southwest corner of the building pad would sit approximately 50 feet above the current grade of Highland Ranch Parkway and the southeast corner of the project site would sit approximately 65 feet above the current grade of Highland Ranch. And separating that building pad from Highland Ranch Parkway is the two-to-one or 50% graded slope to which the grading and revegetation conditions approved with the conditional use permit for development on slopes, hilltops, and ridges apply. Most portions of the subdivision proposed by this tentative map are located within the disturbance area approved in May with that CUP for development on slopes, hilltops, and ridges. Grading outside of that approved disturbance area is however proposed for 0.3 acres located on the northern portion of the project site in this general location here. As conditioned, the existing CUP must be amended to include this area prior to recording any final map. And if approved, compliance with any new or revised conditions applicable to that 0.3 acre area would need to be demonstrated prior to recording any final map. So transitioning here to our 12 tentative map findings, this is where the presentation gets a bit less colorful, with the exception of the findings related to streets. The findings are in numerical order. So first off, we have finding T1, which is conformance with the comprehensive plan. As proposed, the tentative map would allow for 86 townhome lots. Townhomes are commonly classified as missing middle housing that offers homeownership opportunities at lower price points than traditional detached single-family housing. And this housing type advances both policies H1 and H2 related to housing supply and diversity. Looking at policy C4, the sidewalks internal to the project site connect to that larger Five Bridges Parkway sidewalk system to comply with this policy. And city services to the site can be provided at acceptable service levels with the improvements outlined in the Five Bridges Development Agreement in compliance with policy CF1. Findings T2 and T7 on this slide each relate to streets. Finding T2 focuses on conformance with the city's street master plan. Here, access to the proposed subdivision will be from that first roundabout on Five Bridges Parkway. Offsite roadway improvements must be installed consistent with the development agreement, which, as you'll remember, requires the widening of Highland Ranch Parkway and improvements to its intersection with Pyramid Way upon reaching specific thresholds that are identified based on either dwelling units or level of service. Those thresholds are 650 dwelling units, the degradation of Highland Ranch Parkway below level of service D, or the degradation of the Pyramid Highland intersection below level of service E, whichever of those things occurs first. Finding T7 focuses on impacts to public streets. Trip generation for this tentative map request is estimated at 500 average daily trips with 45 peak hour trips. These trips were included in an updated trip generation letter analyzing the impact of townhomes rather than commercial uses at the entrance to Five Bridges. And that letter found that development of Five Bridges with detached single-family and townhome uses would result in traffic impacts similar to or less than what was analyzed in the initial 2017 master traffic study. However, that trip generation letter that we received does not evaluate whether or not construction of the Village 1A units will degrade the level of service on Highland Ranch Parkway or its intersection with Pyramid Way below the level of service thresholds that are identified in the development agreement and thereby trigger the offset improvements with this particular subdivision. So condition 16 requires a traffic analysis evaluating those level of service thresholds be provided prior to recording any final map so that we can determine if the offset improvements will be required with this subdivision. Additionally, a traffic signal at the intersection of Highland Ranch Parkway and Five Bridges Parkway is needed to serve the Greater Five Bridges project. Condition 17 requires overhead safety lighting be in place before the first certificate of occupancy is issued for a dwelling unit in the subdivision and that a traffic signal warrant analysis also be provided to identify when activation of that signal is needed. This traffic signal was identified in the 2017 master traffic study for Five Bridges and will meet the traffic signal spacing requirements from the intersection of Pyramid Way and Highland Ranch. With conditions 16 and 17 that I just discussed, the street network serving the site will be sufficient to meet the needs of the subdivision request. Also, comments provided by RTC supported the need for additional traffic analysis to evaluate the level of service thresholds in the development agreement. And those comments further requested a ten space park and ride within the project site. However, transportation use such as a park and ride is not a permitted use in the MF2 zoning district. Moving on to finding T3, agencies that regulate environmental impacts did not provide comments on this tentative map request. However, the developer must meet local county and state requirements with regards to environmental impacts. Finding T4 focuses on the availability of water to serve the site. Here, the domestic water requirement for the 86 townhome lots is estimated at 15.5 acre-feet per year and municipal water service will be provided by the Sun Valley General Improvement District. Finding T5 looks at the availability of utilities to serve the site, including sewer and storm drain capacity. The applicant estimates that the 86 townhome lots will generate 51,600 gallons of sewage per day. And here, the applicant is required to provide evidence that there's adequate sewer capacity to serve the project prior to recording a final map and construct sewer capacity improvements consistent with the development agreement if necessary. Stormwater and drainage plan for the subdivision must also be approved prior to recording any final map. Moving on to finding T6, which looks at the availability of schools, police, transportation, and parks. For schools, the project site is zoned for Hall Elementary School, Shaw Middle School, and Spanish Springs High School. The Washoe County School District provided us with comments indicating the project will add two new students for each grade level. Hall Elementary and Shaw Middle are both under capacity and projected to remain so for at least 10 years. Current enrollment at Spanish Springs High School is however overcapacity. Enrollment relief at Spanish Springs is anticipated with the opening of the new HUG High School in fall of 2022. In terms of police services, the Sparks Police Department will provide police services to the site and they express no concerns with the current proposal. As previously discussed, roadway network improvements are needed to accommodate the Five Bridges project and those are identified in the development agreement and will be installed consistent with the thresholds in that agreement. In regards to parks, there are no community or regional parks planned within the Five Bridges project site. Finding T8 on this slide addresses floodplain, slopes, and soils. The lots proposed with this tentative map, they do not fall within the 100-year floodplain. For slopes, as I previously discussed, the existing grade of the project site slopes downward 70 feet and fill will be used to create a building pad at a similar elevation to the Five Bridges Parkway roundabout that provides access to the subdivision. Because a portion of the Village 1A project site falls outside the approved CUP disturbance area, condition 18 has been placed on the project requiring the existing CUP be amended to include that area that falls outside of that approved CUP disturbance area boundary. For soil, final geotechnical reports are required at the time of final map. And in regard to outside agency responses per finding T9, the school district and RTC provided comments that were previously discussed. It is also important to note that we received comments from the Washoe County Community Services Department identifying a conceptual alignment for the Sun Valley Rim Trail proposed to encircle Sun Valley. Sections of that proposed trail alignment cross private lands with a portion crossing through the western portion of the Greater Five Bridges project site. And while that proposed trail alignment is located outside the area of this tentative map request, the alignment should be considered with future tentative maps proposed in the western portion of the Greater Five Bridges project site. Finding T10 asks you to consider the availability of fire protection services. Here, the project site is located outside the four-minute travel time standard for the Sparks Fire Department and a single point of access is proposed from the first round- and a single point of access is proposed from the first roundabout of Five Bridges Parkway. While emergency secondary access will be available from unincorporated lands to the west in this general location and serve various villages within Five Bridges. Because Village One A is located in the southeast corner of the Five Bridges Project Site, its only access is from that first roundabout on Five Bridges Parkway. And so here, the fire code requires single-family residential developments of more than thirty dwelling units to be served by two fire access roads unless all dwelling units are equipped with automatic spring fire systems. So here, condition fifteen requires dwelling units in this proposed subdivision have fire suppression systems. And this condition cannot be removed if the units become located within the four-minute travel time of a Sparks Fire Station, which may occur if the city constructs a six fire station. Finding T eleven looks to other impacts of the proposal. Here, staff has identified landscaping area maintenance, architecture for the residences, fencing, and community amenities. Condition twelve addresses landscaping with the requirement that a landscape maintenance association or homeowners association maintain common areas throughout the project. Final architectural elevations are required prior to recording a final map as outlined in condition eight. To address fencing, condition twenty-two requires open view perimeter fencing. And required recreational amenities and their associated operations must also be approved by the administrator prior to recording a final map as outlined in condition twenty. Some of those required recreational facilities could include walking paths, or a gym, or picnic areas, but there need to be three, and so condition twenty has outlined that those need to be identified, and then the operational aspects administratively approved. Finally, finding T twelve here, which is our final finding, requires the public be notified of this item. And here, the posting of the agenda for this meeting, as well as the planning commission served to provide noticing to the public. Both meeting agendas were posted in compliance with state law. The planning commission considered the twelve tentative map findings just discussed and does recommend council approve the Five Bridges Village One A tentative map subject to twenty-one conditions of approval. And you have a recommendation for that motion both on this slide and in the staff report. So with that, I'll conclude this present presentation and be happy to answer any questions that you might have on this particular request.
All right, questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Um, not so much a question as a, thank you, Ms. Reed, for the very detailed, you know, the conditions which are numerous, but they address a lot of my, not concerns, but, but that we are looking at everything from traffic signals to sprinklers to when the road will be widened as part of the whole project, which I think is important in our due diligence and for the project to be successful. And then, just as I always do to the developer, thank you again for one, one more, you know, small project of that missing middle housing by adding, putting townhouses as part of this project. And so I just can't stress enough throughout, throughout the city, throughout our region, the more townhomes, condominiums, duplexes, that, that missing product in the middle of our, of our housing crunch is critically important. So I greatly appreciate that being included, and thank you, Ms. Reed, for the very thorough presentation.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir, um. Ms. Reed, I had a question going back to finding T six under the transportation portion of it. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that RTC requested ten spaces for the park and ride. But because of the, the type of zoning in that, that district, that was not possible? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, Councilman Anderson, that is absolutely correct. The MF two zoning district does not allow for a park and ride facility. However, there are locations in other areas such as the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development that are in close proximity to this project site and do allow for park and ride facilities. And it is also my understanding that the RTC, as part of their twenty fifty Regional Transportation Plan Update, is looking to identify future park and ride facilities that we will be able to understand the general location of where they're planned and be able to integrate that into our, our project planning process as we move along in the future.
Perfect, and I guess to put it in perspective, do you happen to know what the proximity is to the Kylie Ranch locations?
Yes, um, the park and ride facility is a permitted use in the Kylie Ranch North arterial commercial designation, which is immediately surrounding the intersection of Pyramid Way and Highland Ranch Sparks Boulevard. So there's various locations in very close proximity to Five Bridges that would allow for the establishment of a park and ride. And then there are certainly other zoning districts that would allow for that type of use in other locations. But as it relates to, you know, very close proximity to, to Five Bridges, those are the lands that are most proximate.
Great, thank, thank you very much.
Okay, Councilman Dare?
Yeah, I, I want to say I got, I had the opportunity to go out and tour the, the dirt, we should say, and see what it is going to look like and things. And I, I kind of exciting to see. One is I, I appreciate Councilwoman Bybee bringing up the diversity of just the different style of homes and different units, the missing middle and those kind of things. It really does answer some of those. It's going to be a great product. I do believe in something that we'll be very proud of for Sparks. The, the thing I really like too is some of the, you know, the walking trails is a part of what we do, especially in that area. We have a lot of that. They're going to continue that. Some of the stuff I saw, I just, it made me very pleased. And if you get a chance, I, I, I'm sure the developer would love to take you out there and let you see. It always helps me to see what we're talking about as we're looking at these pictures. I can, I can kind of envision what it'll look like. But I would just encourage you to do so. And I think it's a great option for those living in Sparks, so kind of exciting. With that said, I'm ready to make a motion if you'd like, or if there's more discussion.
Let me just see if there's any more discussion? Okay, go ahead and make your motion.
I move to approve the tentative map for an eighty-six lot townhome subdivision on a site approximately six point one four acres in size. The larger parcel approximately three hundred and eighty-six point nine acres in size located at five 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 Ranch Parkway, Sparks, Nevada, in the MF two multifamily residential zoning district, adopting findings T one through T twelve and the facts supporting those, these findings are set forth in the staff report and subject to conditions of approval one through twenty-one.
Okay, looking for a second. Mr. Abbott? You got a second from Abbott? You're just like one second too short, or your internet's slower? One of the two?
My millennial internet over here.
There, yeah, of course, you had to bring up the millennial. All right, any, any other comments or questions?
I think the only thing I'd like to say, sir, is, uh, staff, good job. And I think, a- as again, Charlene, Councilman Bybee said, is it's so helpful knowing that you guys are walking through these details as you do. And we're very supportive of that, and just, I just want to encourage you to continue. So thank you for that. It makes our job very doable. So thank you.
Okay, all right. With that, see no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Sienna, I think you have the next one also.
I most certainly do, Mayor Lawson. So let me get a screen share going. All right, so thank you, Mayor Lawson, and council members against Sienna Reed for the record presenting this item. To confirm, you can see a Stone Brook Phase Three Village CC tentative map slide before you.
Yes.
Good deal. So before you today is a request for tentative map for Phase Three Village CC, which is located in the Stone Brook Plan Development. On this slide, the Village CC project site is outlined in red, and the larger Stone Brook Plan Development boundary is outlined in blue. So as you can see, Village CC generally sits in the center of Stone Brook, northwest of the intersection of Stone Brook Parkway and Opio Ranch Parkway. As proposed, the Village CC tentative map consists of seventy-three detached, single-family lots on nineteen point five two acres. Lots are proposed to range in size from approximately seven thousand eighty-one to twenty thousand six hundred and eighty-six square feet. The gross density of the project is three point seven dwelling units per acre, and that density is consistent with the low-density residential or LDR comprehensive plant land use category that applies to the site, as that category specifies a density range between three and six dwelling units per acre. This slide shows you the lot layout and landscaping associated with Village CC. So as you can see here, access to the subdivision will be from two intersections with Opio Ranch Parkway. To meet the handbook standards for this site, the subdivision is designed with interior lots that are a minimum of six thousand square feet in size and corner lots that are a minimum of sixty-five hundred square feet. All right, so swiftly switching gears with this presentation from the overview to the findings for this tentative map request. As you know, we have a fair few findings for tentative maps. These next few slides go briefly through those twelve findings, and for the most part are in numerical order. So starting off with finding T one, which is conformance with the comprehensive plan. Here, the seventy-three detached, single-family lots proposed with this tentative map would provide additional residential lots in Sparks that support the production of new housing and advanced policy H one. Policy CC eight encourages neighborhood diversity with varied lot sizes, as well as a mix of architectural styles, materials, and colors. In support of this policy, this tentative map includes varied lot sizes, and future home designs must comply with the architectural standards in the handbook that address varied building design. Looking at policy C four, sidewalks are required or proposed, excuse me, on both sides of the streets per the handbook and in compliance with this policy. And city services to the site can be provided at acceptable service levels, as was previously evaluated with the handbook approval and in compliance with policy CF one. On this slide, here we have findings T two and T seven. Both of these findings relate to streets. For conformance with the city's street master plan, project access, as discussed, is provided from Opio Ranch Parkway. That's consistent with the Stone Brook Handbook Approval. Finding T seven focuses on impacts to public streets. Here, an updated trip generation letter was provided analyzing the single-family lots in this subdivision, as well as the remaining single-family villages in Stone Brook in relation to the master traffic study. That letter finds trips associated with this tentative map, plus remaining single-family lots within Stone Brook will be comparable to the single-family units analyzed in the master traffic study and on which the Stone Brook Parkway Network was designed. That said, adequate capacity exists to accommodate not only the seventy-three lots proposed in Village CC, but also the remaining single-family villages within Stone Brook. Comments provided by the Regional Transportation Commission agree with these findings. Moving on to finding T three, agencies that regulate environmental impacts. Here, we received comments from the Washoe County Health District regarding final map requirements. And beyond that, the developer must meet local county and state requirements with regards to environmental impacts. Finding T four focuses on the availability of water to serve the site. Here, the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, or TMA, will provide municipal water service, and the domestic water demand is estimated at a little bit over ninety-two acre feet per year. Finding T five looks at the availability of utilities to serve the site, including sewer and storm drain capacity. It's estimated that the seventy-three single-family lots, once they have residences on them, will generate twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifty gallons of sewage per day. The applicant is required to provide evidence that there's adequate sewer capacity to serve the project prior to reporting a final map. And the city has accounted for the sewer capacity in the studies conducted at the handbook approval stage. For storm drain capacity, a final stormwater and drainage plan must be provided prior to providing, or excuse me, prior to approving any final map. On this slide, finding T six looks at the availability of schools, police, transportation, and parks. For schools, the Washoe County School District comments indicate the project will add sixteen new students to Bow Hatch Elementary, seven new students to Sky Ranch Middle School, and seven new students to Spanish Springs High School. Bow Hatch Elementary is projected to remain under capacity for at least five years. Sky Ranch, while recently constructed, is projected to be overcapacity in the next five years. And options to alleviate higher enrollments projected at Sky Ranch include the construction of additions to that school and potential adjustments to enrollment boundaries. Spanish Springs High School, as you know, is currently overcapacity. However, enrollment relief at Spanish Springs is anticipated due to the opening of HUG High School later in the fall of twenty twenty-two. The Sparks Police Department will provide services to the site, and they express no concerns with the current proposal. And as previously discussed, the roadway network for Stone Brook was designed to accommodate the trips associated with this subdivision. And for parks, parks will be provided consistent, excuse me, jumping around, parks will be provided consistent with the handbook that plans for a twenty-acre community park site adjacent to La Posada and north of Village CC. Moving on to finding T eight, that addresses floodplain, slopes, and soils. The lots proposed with this tentative map do not fall within the one hundred year floodplain, as a letter of map revision was finalized in two thousand and eleven in association with the reach for regional flood control improvements. The site is predominantly flat and does not trigger development standards required of sites that contain significant slopes. And in relation to soil, final geotechnical reports are required at the time of final map. In regard to outside agency responses per finding T nine, here only the school district, RTC, and the Washoe County Health District provided comments, and those were each previously discussed. So finding T ten asks you to consider the availability of fire protection services. Here, the project site is located slightly outside the four-minute travel time standard for the Sparks Fire Department. And the city does have an agreement with the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District for automatic aid to serve this area. Moving on to finding T eleven, that looks at other impacts of the proposed subdivision. Here, we've identified landscaping area maintenance, architecture for the residences, and fencing. Condition twelve addresses landscaping with that requirement that a landscape maintenance association maintain common areas throughout the project. Architectural standards outlined in the handbook are reviewed as model house plans prior to each final map per condition eight. And to address fencing, condition fifteen requires final fencing plans prior to recording a final map. And finally, finding T eleven requires the public be notified of this item. Here, the posting of the agenda for this meeting, as well as the planning commission served to provide notice, and both agendas were posted in compliance with state law. In considering this item, the planning commission considered each of the twelve tentative map findings just discussed and does recommend city council approve the request as conditioned. You have a recommended motion both on this slide and also in the staff report. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll conclude this presentation and be happy to answer any questions that you might have on this request.
Hey, questions from the council? Anyone? No questions? You didn't get it this, Sienna. You explained everything. Okay, with that then, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and once again, thank you, Ms. Reed. Very thorough, easy to follow for those of us throughout, or, you know, planning and all of these. It's, it's so technical that it really helps that you lay things out so succinctly for us and knowing the conditions that are part of our development, our growth, I think is critically important. So thank you and staff for the job you always do on this. And I'm going to go ahead and move to approve tentative map for seventy-three lot, single fam- family subdivision on a site approximately nineteen point five two acres in size within the NUD New Urban District, Stone Brook, zoning district generally located southeast of Pyramid Way and south of La Posada Drive, Sparks, Nevada. Adopting findings T one through T twelve, and the facts supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval one through fifteen. is set forth in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval one through fifteen.
I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Vanderwell, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sienna. All right, Mr. Arnalas, you have our next one, nine point four, possible acceptance of the advice and recommendation provided in resolution number five from the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee regarding the expenditure of eight hundred thousand in lodging tax proceeds for the Victorian Square Infrastructure Improvement Project, Section Four.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of the Sparks City Council. This is Armando Arnalas, the Assistant Community Services Director, here to ask the council to consider acceptance of resolution number five from the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee, which from here on, I will just refer to as the committee. And the resolution number five asks the council to expand eight hundred thousand dollars for section four improvement project. In terms of background, since it's been some time since you've seen one of these items from the committee, these dollars are available to the city of Sparks as a result of Assembly Bill two zero five, which the Nevada Legislature passed and the governor signed into law in two thousand and three and which imposed a two-and-a-half percent tax on the gross receipts from the rental of transient lodging in the city of Sparks. The city council must obtain the advice and recommendations of the committee to expend proceeds. In terms of the composition of the committee, and this is prescribed by AB two zero five, it calls for two members of your body, the mayor and council, and those members are currently council member Bybee, who is the chair of the committee, and Mayor Lawson. In addition, the committee must include a representative of a property that belongs in Nevada Resort Association in the city of Sparks. And so that person is currently Mark Struppins, who is the general manager of the Nugget Casino Resort. And there are two RSCBA appointees. One is Jennifer Cunningham, who is staff to the RSCBA, and the other is currently Shannon Keel, who is the general manager of the Grand Sierra Resort. AB two oh five also requires the committee develop a master plan that identifies proposed projects in Victorian Square, or they could be outside of Victorian Square, provided they provide a direct benefit to the square that promote tourism in Washoe County and identify methods for financing those projects. Of course, the primary method for financing this project is, in fact, the lodging tax. The master plan was most recently amended in two thousand and sixteen, at which time the Victorian Square Infrastructure Improvement Project was explicitly added to the master plan. So what is the Victorian Square Infrastructure Improvement Project? Well, as you are aware, the Victorian Avenue and the adjacent streets and the plaza are heavily used for special events. They have been for, you know, decades now, and that streetscape, the streetscape owner in those areas, you know, has taken a beating. And the thought with this project was that we would not replace everything on a wholesale basis, but go in and on an as-needed basis, repair, replace things like concrete surfaces and pavers, curbs, kiosks, street furniture, fencing, and trees. This graphic is an exhibit from the master plan itself, and it identifies various sections in different colors. The intent was for the city, over a period of several years, to undertake these sections, the timing of which would depend on what else is going on downtown, particularly with regard to all of the redevelopment activity on private property that is occurring. So to date, section one, the area in green on the right side or east end of the square was completed. Yes?
We're not seeing your maps.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I shared my screen.
I've seen them before, so I know what you're talking about, but I'm sure the public doesn't.
I suppose I should have done that thing that everybody does and asked you if you could see my screen, so I apologize.
Now we can see it. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. I do apologize. So section one, the area in green, is was undertaken several years ago. And then the south side of sections two and three, which is the, you know, the south side of Victorian Avenue, those have been completed as well. The north sides of those blocks, we did not undertake because we were anticipating redevelopment of the former Bourbon Square parcel, which is where the Nugget Events Center is now located. And then, of course, on the north side of the block to the west, you know, we're anticipating future redevelopment of those properties as well. And so those have been deferred for a later date. Section four, which is the subject of what we're discussing today, is outlined in yellow on the left or west side of your screen. And is shown more, more, I guess, zoomed in here and outlined in green. What I do want to note here is that to my earlier point about us, you know, not replacing, you know, pavers or concrete where we anticipate future development affecting that, you can see this area here where my cursor is just south of the two parcels that are owned by Silverwing. We're leaving that out in anticipation that when, you know, that site gets developed, that there would potentially be some damage that we, that we don't want to, you know, have occur. So in terms of the ability of the lodging tax to cover this proposed expenditure of up to eight hundred thousand dollars, we have an engineer's estimate in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars for section four of the project. That amount includes a fifty thousand dollar force account, so we believe that that eight hundred thousand dollar allowance is sufficient, if you will. As of the end of last fiscal year on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, the lodging tax fund had an ending fund balance of over four point eight million dollars. We do have some current commitments in terms of those dollars. The total approximately nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, and those are the remaining payments to the Nugget and to Galaxy Theaters for the projects that they undertook. And those projects respectively were, of course, the construction of the Nugget Events Center and Galaxy's renovations and reopening of the formerly closed theater. So the lodging tax, you know, can absorb the six hundred thousand dollar cost, cover those pre-existing commitments, and still have sufficient funds for other projects that we anticipate coming up here over the next couple, three years. In terms of the purpose of this item, really, your acceptance of resolution number five would allow the city to proceed with bidding and awarding a construction contract for the section four project later this year. So staff is recommending that the council accept resolution number five. And here on the screen and in your staff report is a proposed motion. And that concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, question from the council. Mr. Abbott?
Armando. Sorry, what was that?
Followed by Mr. Dare.
Oh, I was asking for some of the businesses down there. How long are we looking at for construction for them to, if they can plan around that?
I believe the construction period is in the around seventy to ninety days.
Gotcha. Cool, thank you.
Hey, Councilman Dare.
My question's similar, but it just, did you say the timing you're thinking of this, or we're just going out for bid, so we'd be trying to be done by the summer? Didn't you say that? I'm sorry, I missed it if I didn't hear that.
I think the Capitol Project Staff is looking to bring an award of a contract to the city council in March. So the hope here would be that, you know, we would be done by the early part of the summer in time for the, you know, the bulk of the events to, you know, season if we are able to have events this year to occur.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Armando, thank you for the presentation and for all of your work on this whole project. And I think, looking at those phases and how many years have we been doing this, and we knew with all the everything happening in Victorian Square, that we would have to take it a piece at a time when it made sense. And the work you've done already has just made such an incredible difference. And so I'm excited to continue that, to expand further west along Victorian, to be able to get that done, to get this phase of it done, and hopefully be ready to resume some of our special events this summer. So, you know, COVID, COVID hasn't been all good, but sometimes, you know, the ability to get some work done before we resume activities down there makes sense. And I think at the end of the day, Victorian Square, we know, even looking further out, there's so much more to come, and we've done so much already between city staff or developers, the businesses that are down there. It's exciting because I think we're only moving forward to things being, to be in that vibrant Victorian Square District that people are live, work, play, and becomes a model for the region. And people, I think everything happening down there is going to surprise some, but make the city Sparks proud. So thank you for your work and for what we're looking at and the continued work of staff that's working on this as well. Thank you.
I have one more question.
I'm there.
Have we thought about, just because this is such an area for our whole city, you know, we go out and talk to people, people talk about our downtown, what are we doing? Just some extra communication around the excitement of our funding is going in, we're committed to these events. I mean, people, people should know that in some ways, but there's a lot of conversation going on with their, all the changes that have happened, and we see them all as positive and the great, what it's going to be, just like Ms. Bybee just mentioned. But I think sometimes it doesn't always translate into the public is, have we thought about putting out or just doing some PR work or anything that, or maybe that's already going, I don't know. But I like the idea of potentially getting ahead of it, especially if we're doing more construction, more investment. Those are all really good news. And therefore, when we have future events, just kind of, it's kind of doubling down on communication. Have we, are we doing that, or can we?
We certainly can. I think the manager, I'm sure, has heard your comments, and through Mr. Wall, I think I can imagine there'll be some follow-up efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. Cruz? We've absolutely heard your comments, and we'll do everything we can to get that word out. But as you all well know, our vast public information staff of one is stretched incredibly thin right now. Mostly charging into the COVID issues and keeping regular city business front and center. So this will certainly be on her list of things to do, but I want to, want to try and manage the expectations because it is a single resource taking care of, taking care of our city for us.
And she does the work of three, but.
She does.
Yeah, only one. All right, any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I moved to accept the, accept the advice and recommendation provided in resolution number five in the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee regarding the expenditure of eight hundred thousand dollars in lodging tax proceeds for the Victorian Square Infrastructure Improvement Project, Section Four.
Okay, looking for a second?
A second.
Look at everybody at one time. All right, E D, E D. Mr. Anderson got the second. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on. Nine point five. Consideration discussion of possible approval of providing paramedic-level emergency medical services on Engine Twelve at Station One in accordance with the paramedic program implementation schedule adopted by the city council on August twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen. And we have Chief Reed with us today to talk about this. Welcome.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. For the record, Jim Reed, your fire chief, and just like last year, I'm back at the start of the year to ask you for approval for that next engine to follow the paramedic plan, to go paramedic. And that should be tomorrow morning at eight AM. And yes, we did come to you back in August of two thousand and sixteen to start the program. And then Sparks was able to start with two fire stations going paramedic. That would be Station Four and Station Five in the north part of our city in April of two thousand and seventeen. And then, like I said, every year since, we've come to you at the start of the year, and we've added another engine to be paramedic. So Engine Twelve would now increase all of our city's fire engines to be at that paramedic level, at least one paramedic twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Currently, we have thirty paramedics on staff. Twenty-four of those are at the firefighter level. And I do have a few stats to throw in. Over the last three years, our EMS requirements, or not no requirements, but calls for service have increased by eleven percent. Last year, our call volume was about eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-one, and about eighty-seven percent of those were EMS-related somehow. What do the paramedics do for us? The paramedic-level service allows us to give interventions or, you know, drugs for pain management, a twelve-lead EKG. Last year, according to our data, there was a hundred and ten cardiac arrests that we were able to help people with pain management about eighty-seven times. Or about a hundred and seventy-five times, we were able to put the twelve-lead EKGs, not me, the guys out on scene, but they were able to, you know, they weren't in a full cardiac arrest, but they were having some sort of heart problem. And our guys were able to get those leads on initially and then print that out, and then it follows them to the hospital so that the doctors at the hospital can, are able to see what happened ten, fifteen minutes ago and able to treat them after, you know, accordingly. So that's all I have for you. I'm here for any questions.
Questions from the council? Mr. Dare?
How many?
Forever.
So we've done this each year, and now obviously we're working on potentially another one, so that, where are we now? We have another, one more after this we need, or is it two more?
So we will have six of our seven apparatus will be paramedic.
Well, and I just want to say to the community what that means is I just appreciate you guys adapting as we go to the needs of what we see in our community, our firemen, and just bringing safety to that. But so, so we have one more year that you'll be here, and then the following year, hopefully, we're doing that for our next station, I guess. So that'd be my hope, but.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, Chris took my question there, but I think it's awesome. It'll help, you know, I don't know if I would take confusion with Rims and knowing, you know, all of Sparks that we, you know, we have our paramedics that are going out there when they, when they're showing up there, we know that we're initiating this. So good stuff, good work, chief, and thank you.
Thank you for the support.
Ms. Bybee?
I just wanted to add to the comments, chief. What's exciting is to, when I was, to be here, you know, as a council member, when we first approved the paramedics and added them, and to see that we started with fifteen in two thousand and seventeen and to double that, and to be able to add it to every one of our stations is exciting because it's such a critical need, and it just is such a common sense solution to really what our fire department primarily is, you know, EMS calls. And we're able to respond to those, and I can't help but think since two thousand and seventeen, how many lives we've saved, how many differences and outcomes were because we had those paramedics, and we made that commitment to up the game and to find the finances to do that. So thank you to your men, to the men and women and the, you know, the paramedics that we have, and really glad to have you come back and get us to Engine Twelve now. So thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Anderson?
We're gonna sound like a broken record, Chief Reed, but I just want to say thank you for the effort. You, you all are doing everything from you to all of the folks in your department. Because, I mean, the bottom line is, we're making our city a safer place to live, work, and play. And so, whether you're a visitor or a resident, by bringing on more paramedics, we're a safer place. And just want to say thanks. And unless there's anything more, I'm willing to make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
I move to approve providing paramedic level emergency medical service on Engine 12 at Fire Station 1 in accordance with the Paramedic Program Implementation Schedule adopted by City Council on August 22, 2016.
Okay, looking for a second.
A second.
Ms. Vanderwell, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, we'll move on, appreciate it.
Okay, item 9.6, consideration discussion of possible approval of an Amendment Number Two to Site Lease Agreement A-2272 between the City of Sparks and NCWPCSMLP 26-Year Site Tower Holdings LLC. Mr. Martini. And if you're speaking, you are.
Lisa, got me, my bad. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson. Could you confirm for me that you see a wonderful picture of Fire Station Number One on your screen?
Yes, sir, we do.
We, we can see the picture, but John, we can't see you.
Can't see me?
We can see your background.
Okay.
You're doing the invisible man, there we go.
How's that?
Much better.
Well, thank you, Lisa, I appreciate that.
Well, okay, there he is.
Again, I am John Martini, your Assistant City Manager for External Services. And I'm here today to present to you an amendment to an existing site lease agreement for the lease of about 700 square feet of property located at Fire Station Number One that was done to support the construction and operation of the Communications Tower, which you can clearly see in the picture. I'm sure most of you have driven by it and noticed it. As a matter of background in this matter, the city entered into a site lease agreement with McCaw Communications in 1996. The term of that lease was for 25 years. And the lease expired on January 31, 2021, so just last month. The existing lease agreement did require the tenant to pay the city a monthly rent. The value of that monthly rent there in January 31 of this year was $1,356 and for you, Mayor Lawson, plus 15 cents.
Sweet.
The existing lease does allow the tenant unrestricted 24 hours a day, seven days a week, access to the lease area, which as all of you are probably recognizing at this point, is inside our complex there for Fire Station Number One, which I will let the council know that since this lease agreement was done in 1996, some things have changed and Fire Station 1 is now a secure facility. So, that's a little problematic, but we will get to it here in a minute in my presentation. The original agreement, which as Mayor Lawson said, is A-2272, was administratively amended in May of 1997. I looked into that amendment. It was an amendment simply to change the name of the tenant from McCaw Communications to Reno Cellular Telephone Company, which is a little strange because the original agreement allows for the terms and conditions to go with land, if you will, to any future successor or assign. In May of 2017, the city was contacted by Crown Castle, acting as agent for the now current tenant, who is NCWPCSMLP 26-Year Site Towers Holdings LLC, as the mayor introduced to us. And they asked us if we would consider extending this agreement for an additional 30 years. As we looked at it as a staff, back then, it was myself and the city manager and then Fire Chief Chris Maples. We determined it was not in the city's best interest to enter into such a long-term lease agreement because we simply don't know the future needs for space at Fire Station 1, whether we need to grow the building or get some more land back for storage of equipment. 30 years out is pretty hard to predict. So, we declined the request from Crown Castle. They then went and started looking for a site to move this tower to. And then in March of 2020, Crown Castle called us and told us they're having difficulties finding an appropriate site to move the tower to and asked if the city would consider a five-year extension to the existing lease agreement, which when we looked into it, the negotiation team looked into it, we did think it was, the city did have an interest in extending it as we have no planned expansion or need for the space at Fire 1 over the next five years, particularly as projects are not reflected in the five-year capital improvements plan that we are currently working under. So, in October of 2020, Crown Castle was authorized by the tenant to enter into final negotiations with the city staff. Crown Castle worked for a couple of months to get to this Second Amendment to the lease, which the tenant did sign and authorize on January 19 of 2021, which was prior to the lease expiration. So, as you consider Amendment Number Two to the lease, let me give you some high points of what the modifications, the amendment will do. First, we'll talk about the lease term. The lease term will be extended for five more years, meaning it would commence on February 1 of 2021 and would expire on January 31 of 2026. Rent, which you can find in Section 3 of the amendment, February 1, 2021, should this be approved, the monthly rent will increase to $3,350 per month. The old agreement, A-2272, allows for annual increases in rent based on the CPI. That will also take place over the next four years. When we looked at access, remember that I talked about the things that Fire Station Number One had changed a little bit over the course of those 25 years in working with Chief Reed and Chief McEvers. We wanted to get some language change to provide for some security there. So, if you look at the original agreement, Section 4 of this amendment strikes and replaces all of Section 6C of the original agreement. And in short, requires the tenant to provide the city with 48 hours notice for any employee, contractor, vendor, or representative authorized by the tenant who needs access to the leased property. There are times of emergency. So, Section 4 does include some language that provides for emergency conditions where the 48-hour notification's not possible, requires the tenant to come back and inform the Fire Chief in particular as to why. Then there is a new term, a new section added through Section 5 of the amendment. This would add language that restricts the employees, contractors, vendors, and the representatives of the tenant from blocking, obstructing, or interfering with the landlord, meaning our fire station's use of the property outside the lease area. We had some issues come up in the past where there was obstruction within the facility. So, this, this language added in gives us, you know, a tool to work with should this occur in the future. And then, storage of equipment and materials is now included under Section 6, which adds new language that restricts the employees, contractors, vendors, or representatives authorized by the tenant from storing materials or equipment within the fire station property outside the leased areas. That sums up the Amendment Number Two. I will point out to you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that successful negotiations require a team. And I'd like to thank Brandon Sidall and the city attorney's office, of course, Fire Chief Jim Reed and Chief Sean McEvers for their help in what I think bringing a successfully negotiated amendment to this agreement to the table for your consideration. Staff is recommending approval. I'm available if you have any questions.
All right, questions from the council. All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
I'm a member of the Amendment Number Two to Site Lease Agreement A-2272 between the City of Sparks and NCWPCSMLP 26-Year Site Tower Holdings LLC.
Okay, looking for a second.
Second.
Mr. Dare. Okay, any further discussion? All the, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on, 9.7. And I'm not gonna read this whole thing, John. It's a consideration discussion of possible approval of a construction contract AC 5732 for an air compressor at Tom Wharf. And I believe that's Mr. Martini also. Mr. Crouch, you're on mute.
Can you hear me? We've actually, instead of John Martini, we've got our electrical crew supervisor, Jerry Kingery, online to make this presentation today.
Well.
Okay, there we are, sorry.
Your smiling face over there, so.
Mayor Lawson, members of council, Jerry Kingery, the Tom Wharf Electrical Maintenance Crew Supervisor. City staff is asking the city council to approve the removal and replacement of a 100 horsepower air compressor at the Trucking Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Tom Wharf maintains an asset management program that tracks condition consequence of failure and useful life. This air compressor is at the top of the list for replacement. The plant utilizes compressed air to operate process control valves and flow meters throughout the facility. This replacement was anticipated and budgeted for in fiscal year 21. The work was bid by the Sparks Purchasing Department and Ranger Construction was the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $233,195, with the City of Sparks share being $73,153.27. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council. Excellent presentation. All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Anybody? Mr. Anderson.
I'll make the motion. Mr. Kingery, great job. Yeah, no one had any questions for you. I move to approve the construction contract AC 5732 for the air compressor number three replacement project bid number 2021-005, PWP number WA 2021-069. To Ranger Construction should provide and install 100 horsepower air compressor at the Trucking Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount not to exceed $222,000, $223,195, with the City of Sparks share being $73,153.27.
Okay, looking for a second.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Bybee, second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jerry, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.8, consideration possible approval on expenditure of $62,447.22 to purchase one John Deere 5100E tractor from Deere and Company, Renner Equipment Company as part of the CIP for fiscal year 2021, using a joiner bid from Sourcewell, a purchasing consortium contract number 110719-JDC. Mr. Corman. Keeps. He's showing us all these shiny new toys, I love it.
Try and, try and make this bigger, but it's not working. Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the council. My name is Ron Corman and I am your Public Works Maintenance Manager. Today, I'm before you to request your consideration and approval to spend $62,447.22 to purchase a tractor like the one I'm hoping that you're seeing in the, in your screen.
Yes, sir, we are.
And that is another shot of the tractor. And this is how we're going to be utilizing this tractor. As you may be aware, this during summer season, Public Works Maintenance mows approximately 250 acres of turf every week. And this particular machine, that unit that you see behind the tractor is a big giant flail mower and that mower is about 15 feet wide. So, we are requesting this purchase for our drains department. And as time has gone on, we're finding that we have more and more open spaces that we need to keep the brush cut down on, cut down on that properties, those properties in order to promote drainage across the, you know, through the drainage system that the City of Sparks owns and maintains. This piece of equipment will bring efficiencies to us by able, making it able to efficiently cover a lot more acreage per day than what we would currently have without adequate equipment. We will be making this purchase, if approved, through the, a joint, joiner contract through Renner Equipment and John Deere. And this is a contract that is through a Sourcewell, which is a purchasing consortium. We're gonna be utilizing contract 110719-JDC. $75,000 was included in the fiscal year 2021 budget that was approved by council on May 26, 2020. And $75,000 of these funds are still remaining. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, questions from the council. Ms. Bybee.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Corman. Just a quick question, is this to replace another piece of equipment? Or is this in addition to what we have? And this isn't something newer and better than what we're currently using?
Yes, yes, ma'am. This is, this is in addition to our fleet. What we've currently been using is another piece of equipment that does the job, but not adequately. It's got insufficient horsepower to, to drive this mowing unit efficiently. And so, yes, we're asking for this as an upgrade to be able to efficiently do this work.
Okay, thank you. And also want to recognize the important work that your, that your crew and our maintenance and, you know, the whole crew does across the city because a lot of people forget about until we get calls about weeds or about parks that are maintained or going into our ditches and areas and streets and drains. Your work that your crews do is critically important to the city and sometimes doesn't go recognized. So, I appreciate what they do and I'm excited to support purchasing some equipment to help them do it better.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your comments.
Mr. Dare.
I think it's important that we keep giving you tools that help, especially along the river and the ditches and a lot of what we do. And so, I can make a motion whenever we're ready, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. I move to approve the purchase of one John Deere 5100E tractor from Deere and Company, Renner Equipment Company, in the amount of $62,447.22. And that's based upon, I get to go out and drive it, that'd be fun too, I'm just thinking.
I can arrange that.
No, see the city managers over there, no.
Okay, I tried that on the, the record, I just approved it.
Insurance.
We can't second that motion, you know.
I moved to approve the purchase of one John Deere 5100E tractor from Deere and Company, Renner Equipment Company, in the amount of $62,447.22. And Christopher cannot drive it.
There we go.
They walk like a man.
Second by council and Abbott, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right, 9.9, consideration discussion of possible approval of expenditure of $72,000 to purchase a software upgrade, annual support, data conversion, and onsite setup and training from MateStar for the City of Sparks Public Work Asset and Work Tracking System. Mr. Corman.
Thank you very much again, Mayor Lawson, members of the council, Ron Corman, your Public Works Maintenance Manager, for the record. Thank you very much again, uh, Mayor Lawson, members of the council, Ron Corman, your Public Works Maintenance Manager for the record. Uh, unfortunately, I don't have any real cool slides to go along with this one, so you'll just have to kind of bear with me a little bit. But, uh, I want to give you a little bit of background. Um, we're asking for seventy-two thousand dollars to upgrade a software system that Public Works Maintenance uses for tracking the activities that we perform throughout the city, uh, every day. Background, this was a project that was taken on, uh, by the RTC to Regional Transportation Commission to, uh, track uh, the different types of work that the city of Sparks, the city of Reno, and Washoe County did on a daily basis and from year to year. That project ended, um, at some point. And, uh, through the project, um, the Regional Transportation Commission um, had hired a, um, consultant to come in to sort of oversee the project and part of the parameters were to give each one of the agencies a, uh, asset and, and activity tracking program. And that program is MateStar. Um, this was in the mid nineties when this project kicked off, and now here we are in twenty, twenty-one. And, uh, we have been looking for an asset management program for Public Works Maintenance. And, uh, we've decided that MateStar is probably our best bet. And recently, MateStar has come out with a mobile application. So what we're asking to do is to spend this money to upgrade our version and to, uh, put into place a new, um, sort of platform that we can utilize, um, mobile. And so our staff will be able to fill out their activity, uh, reports during the day as they log into work orders and log, you know, back out. That will track their time. And then, of course, they'll be able to enter in any materials or any other notes or anything that they, uh, would like to add to that work order. Um, and then it will, once they, um, you know, close it out, then it will go to their supervisor for approval. If it's approved, then it will go into the history. Currently, our staff comes back to the yard at the end of their shift and sits down and kind of writes out what they did during the day. Some folks keep notes, some folks don't. Um, but, you know, the quality of the data isn't as, as tight and as good as we'd like it to be. Um, so we think that we will be able to, uh, improve our data as well as our efficiency through, through this program and to give our employees in the field an additional tool, uh, to use um, while they're doing their work. This will have links in through GIS. Um, so locating assets that are owned by the city. Um, it will also, you know, have the ability to contain photographs and or technical data um, for those employees when they're out in the field. And the, uh, kind of the last, but, uh, one of the biggest, um, the most exciting things for me is from a maintenance perspective is that, you know, anybody that's involved in maintenance prefers to do maintenance before it breaks. And so, um, we will be able to institute a, uh, a reminder system. We'll be able to put in uh, maintenance, um, requirement, timing requirements, and then they will automatically uh, come up and, uh, issue a work order. So, uh, you know, our, our staff in the field will be able to complete maintenance while they're in buildings, maybe making a repair on something else. So, um, I know that's kind of a lot about that, but it's exciting for us to upgrade this and, and make it work for us instead of us working for it. And so, again, uh, hoping for your, uh, consideration and possible approval of seventy-two thousand to upgrade our software.
All right, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Ms. Bybee?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Corman. Uh, I, I agree with you. I think, uh, what's exciting about it is the fact that it'll increase the accuracy of your reporting, the efficiency of the crews that are out there. Cost savings or just the fiscal side of it. Uh, like you said, if you can find things with those reminders uh, and fix them before they're broken, it's more proactive. And I think that's really important. And I think it's exciting because as with all things, uh, technology, we're finding how much technology can make us more efficient, more, and especially for the last year. We've depended on technology to run our city right now. So one more example of how technology, uh, can help us do our job better and, uh, and be an asset to us. And I think, uh, it's money absolutely well spent. Um, and I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, unless you want to wait for more comments.
Well, let's get a motion and then we'll ask for comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move to approve the purchase of a software upgrade, annual support, data conversion, and onsite setup and training from MateStar in the amount of seventy-two thousand dollars for the city of Sparks Public Works Asset and Work Tracking System.
Hey, looking for a second, Mr. Dare?
I could second that. I do have one thing.
Now we'll ask for comment. Go right ahead.
Thank you. And, and in this, I know we talked a little bit about it, but I'd like just to kind of, uh, there's always cost of iPads or whatever it is that you just spoke about as well. And we had talked about that, that we're doing a small rollout and there's some funding there for that. Can you just put that on the record so we kind of see how that's?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I apologize for not, uh, including that in my statement, but, uh, yes, we, um, we're hoping to have the data conversion and a new platform online by the first of July. And then at that time, we will do a short rollout, uh, for, um, some different staff members, but in all of our, uh, different sections of the, of the, uh, maintenance division. And, um, so we will give that to, you know, the, uh, an iPad or a smartphone or whatever the, you know, the appropriate device is to uh, select number of our employees. And so they'll start to use that during the day and, and they will sort of be port of the, part of the, um, configuration team, I guess I should say. Um, so as we, you know, get into it, if there's changes we need to make, uh, let's make it in the beginning before everybody's involved. So, um, yeah, we're gonna do a slow, slow rollout, probably about over the first year. Everybody will be reporting into it, but some will be doing it via a mobile unit. Others will still contin- continue to do their daily, daily paper dailies until it, you know, fully rolls out.
Any other comments or questions? And for me, this is what I've been saying since twenty-ten is technology, technology, technology. So this is just one more step in that right direction. Happy to see that, Mr. Corman. So with that, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Consideration discussion of possible ratification of the city manager's approval of, of a professional services contract AC five, seven, three, one with Tiffany Young Consulting LLC for cultural co- com- competency. There we go. I knew it'd come out. Professional learning services and an estimated amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. And I see Ms. McCormick is with us.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and City Council. For the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. And before you today, seeking your ratification of an agreement with Tiffany Young Consulting for cultural competency training. Uh, in June twenty, twenty, as the council will remember, council directed staff to take steps to establish a diversity commission. Shortly thereafter, city manager Cruts contacted Tiffany Young, who is the Equity and Diversity Director for Washoe County School District and who also offers professional learning ser- professional consulting services in the areas of diversity and cultural awareness. Ms. Young proposed to provide a series of trainings to city employees and the city council. Uh, the agreement contains a fee structure, uh, but does not contain a maximum cost. Staff has estimated that the total cost of this agreement will be approximately sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, but that could increase or decrease depending on, uh, what services the city ultimately needs. Of course, that sixteen thousand dollars is well within the city manager's authority under Sparks Municipal Code. Uh, but given the importance of Miss Young's work to the city's diversity and belonging initiatives, staff wanted to give council the opportunity to review and ratify this agreement. Uh, staff met with Ms. Young on Friday, uh, for the first four-hour training session. Uh, we had about thirty senior employees, um, and, uh, uh, the Nugget hosted us, so thank you to them as well. Uh, and I am blown away by Ms. Young. Uh, she's a very engaging speaker. Um, she sparked some really good but difficult conversations between city employees. Um, and one of the aha moments that I had during the training, uh, was that when we talk about diversity, we need to actually explain what we mean. Uh, you know, it's not just racial diversity. While race is certainly one aspect of diversity, it also includes gender, age, different abilities, education, sexual orientation, ethnicity, nationality, and so many other characteristics that we really need to acknowledge when we talk about diversity. Um, in short, it was an excellent workshop, and I am truly excited about continuing to work with Miss Young um, on these initiatives. And, um, I'm excited for the council to attend her training as well. Um, staff does recommend that council ratify this agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Um, not a question so much as a comment, and, uh, I thank you to city manager Cruts and Assistant City Manager McCormick. Because I've really been bugging you guys since last June on getting this rolling. And unfortunately, like many of the things, all of us want to see done, COVID's kind of, we've been tripping over, rightfully so. Uh, and, and so it, it hasn't happened as quickly as I had hoped, but we want to get it right. So I know, I appreciate that we um, that we have taken some time. I think, um, I'm looking forward to the training that we're going to get. And I think uh, we've had three community conversations, um, that, that have gone really well. Uh, community voices being heard and moving towards that, uh, diversity commission, which will be open. Uh, and, and I think Miss Young will definitely help us in deciding what the makeup of that looks like. What are the models we can look at across the country that would work? That will be a good fit for Sparks. And, um, I'm excited for the training, for that opportunity to really hear, um, hear more voices in our city of people that we don't hear from and don't, whether they don't know how to reach us or, um, we, I, I just think it's, it's important, uh, because it, it helps at the end of the day. It helps, um, not just those who work for the city of Sparks. It helps all of our residents and the people that we represent in our wards and throughout the city, um, every day. And right now, uh, coming through this pandemic, it's more important than ever that we're doing things together and that we're doing things for each other and that we are thinking about our neighbors. And, and I think the timing is good for this too, because the need is there for all of us. And I think the benefit is also there for all of us. So thank you, um, Ms. McCormick for, um, for working on this. And, um, I appreciate your effort and obviously support, uh, our expenditure and our working with Miss Young as we continue forward. Thank you.
You're the, uh, Mr. Dare?
Yeah, I just want to agree how important it is. And I think we, we get to lead and, and really step up, represent, serve and all these nice words for our community. But one of the best things I think we can do is be an example. And so in what we've seen and what we've watched our culture go through here and abroad, you know, just across the whole country. I like that we are coming to conversation, valuing each other and willing to listen. And, uh, it's exciting. And I, I as well, we've, a lot of us all have experience with Ms. Tiffany Young, and she is, uh, a bright spot for sure. And, and definitely is challenging in many ways. And so we're, we'll be prepared for that. But, uh, I think it's good challenges and it's good things to talk about. So, uh, fantastic. Thank you, staff. And look forward to walking this out and figuring out where Sparks fits into this and how we can be a part.
Okay, any other questions or comments, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Cruts and Ms. McCormick for getting this going. Um, it's, it's gonna be important for our community to see that we're taking steps to become a more engaged city, uh, with, with all of our citizens. And I, I truly appreciate it. Um, as, uh, Councilwoman Bybee said, uh, some of these conversations are difficult, but, but they're the right ones to have. And I just want to say thank you guys for, for taking part in it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to ratify the city manager's approval of the professional services contract AC dash five, seven, three, one with Tiffany Young Consulting LLC for cultural competency, professional learning services in an estimated amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay. Got a second from Ms. Bybee. Any further discussion? Okay, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, most carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Uh, number ten, we have none. Eleven, we have none. Down to twelve. Comments from the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If anybody is wishing to provide public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand function from your Zoom app. And we'll give them just a moment, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying none.
Okay. All right, moving on to twelve point two, comments from the mayor, city council, city manager. Mr. Cruts, you have anything?
Nothing today, sir.
Okay, I'm ignoring Councilman Dare. No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead, Christopher. It's. You sound very good, though.
There you go. I do have an important thing I want to share, and it is right here. Happy birthday, Neil. Woo, you're the man.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I'm sure you do. I'm in trouble.
Okay, he's on his thirtieth anniversary of, of his birthday, right? Thirty-first birthday again, or the Jack Benny was thirty-five all the time. Yep, that shows you how old I am. They don't even know who Jack Benny is out there. Okay, uh, anyone else on the council wishing to make a comment? All right, thank you, guys. Thanks for another good meeting. And let's go out there and do the right thing. And so without objection, we are adjourned.
Thank you.